Call the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Big Plan Information to Order. And again, thank S A T A for following. We, I guess we'll want Gary to serve for whoever. I guess, you know, I think that Bob is going to be here in a minute, so. Sorry for Kevin. Is he all right?
Sure.
And Bill Rice, do you know how, he said he's not?
I did not, I don't think I heard.
Okay. So, anyway, we'll do that. And then, I'm sure Bob will be here in a minute, since he gave me a ride here. So Gary and Richard are going to serve. And let's begin. The first item on the agenda is a referral to propose new form-based codes on the property located at 200 Hop Meadow Street. And we've all received the 65-page document from Gateway Planning. And Aaron, how do you want to attack this?
Sure. Let me, just very generally, it is a significantly dense document. This is the code, the form-based code, that was the product of the charrette that was done last fall. We had actually produced the first draft pretty quickly. And then, it was reviewed by the Hartford, Hartford's consultants. We reviewed it in-house ourselves. It had a number of comments back to the consultant. Just on day 12 is when we got the final comments back from everybody's consultants. Got those back to the Gateway Planning. And they made the final tweaks to the document that you see in front of you now. And that's the one that you've got before this, this meeting. In general, it's a, it's a form-based code, it's very different than the Town Center code. It provides a series of alternatives that are shown on the maps that were also part of as well. If anybody didn't get a copy of it or needs a copy of the maps, I can give you that as well. But what the maps show are a variety of different things. And perhaps the best way to start is just to talk a little bit about the graphics. This draft, portion of the document called Appendix A, is what's called an illustrative master plan. And it shows both portions, the north and the south site. And they're separated by some floodplain and some wetlands in between those sites. This shows a variety of zones that are called out in the code and explains what could happen in each of those zones. Clearly, and it's probably important for people to realize, that the largest structure on the property is there, it's called a special district. I mean, the building is huge, 641,000 square feet. So that was called out as a special district. And what the code allows that to do is to either continue on as it's currently being used, which is certainly desirable, but probably unlikely today. And the second thing is, it allows some modification of that building. If somebody came in and wanted to use a portion of that building, or one wing, or two wings, or half the building, the code would allow that as well. And it would be able to be done very quickly. The other thing that this Appendix A shows is that there are a couple of other zones called mixed-use transition zones, a number of other smaller structures that could be built there, like the small office buildings that could take place there, they could complement the existing building, or they could be totally different. But they're, they're shown there as laid out in what's called a sort of a new urbanist fashion. The other building that's shown there, that probably the one that's closer to Hop Meadow Street, is called the Neighborhood Commercial Zone. And that's probably, perhaps 40,000, maybe 30,000 square feet. It could be at Whole Foods, it could be at Trader Joe's, it could be something like that. It's a neighborhood-type commercial though, not, not a regional draw. It's not a 100,000 square foot large box store, something like that.
That would be like the size of...
It...
Eighties and a half.
Yeah.
Because eighties, I think was 20, we always discussed 22,000 square feet. So, I think that, just to give a perspective.
Yep. District, that's, that's certain. And this, there's, again, these are illustrative plans that are basically governed by things like total site coverage, stormwater runoff, traffic, and so on. So that the traffic reports or traffic requirements for any development of this property is going to have to go through some normal traffic process, the DOT process, and so on. What we're trying to do is to make it as easy as possible for this property to be either reused, developed, or redeveloped, and try to provide as much sort of pre-approval as possible. And so what this code does is it shows, these are the types of things that could occur here, these are the ways that they could be approved, DOT would still be involved, but we have been involving the DEEP, the DOT, and the Department of Economic and Community Development throughout this process. So they've all, they've all seen this stuff as part of the charrette, they came to that as well, and participated in that as well. You might notice on that Appendix A, the first, up at the, at the northern portion, the northern section of the property, is a couple of different zones. Neighborhood zone, which is residential, and then neighborhood commercial as well. So there's a small amount of commercial that's intended to possibly supplement existing residences in that area as well. So, again, the consultants had a lot of interaction with us with regard to, what does the plan of development say? It talks about mixed uses, it talks about appropriate context, it talks about sizes of the buildings being appropriate for the town, and so on. And so a lot of this stuff was generated based upon what the plan of development currently says, in addition to what people said when they came to the charrette and what they talked about. So a lot of those things are certainly possible. So that's, that's just one graphic.
Nice question.
Here.
Do they in the document at all define mixed use?
Well, mixed use is typically, and I don't mean to be smart, but it's a mix of uses, but they talk about...
I mean, does it have to include residential as well?
Yeah, it does. It's intended to contain residential, yes. But what happens, what can happen, for example, the current zone that's there is business zone. And so, it's, although it's pretty unlikely that somebody would come in and build a bunch of other office buildings there without any residential, it's certainly possible as part of the way this code was written. The code was written and then it was tweaked and retweaked again to allow a variety of different types of uses that could be there. The key to this whole process, just like in the center, is that when somebody came in with a plan that was contemplated by the code, they could go through either a type one, type two, type three, or a type four application. Type one and two being the simplest, types three being sort of standard site plan, typical review, type four being something where, well, we hadn't really thought of that before, we think it's a good idea, go through the whole process, and the commissions get to consider, you know, whether that's a good idea or not.
In which case, wouldn't that be anything like this?
Well, it would be, it could be somewhat different. It would have to still look, look out for things like stormwater, flood erosion control, protection, obviously, wetlands protection, traffic would still have to be observed, and so on. So those things are, are in there. They talk about the Route 10 study that's maintaining that Route 10 is a two-lane highway, not a, not a four-lane highway, that's implicit, and it's also called out pretty clearly here. It talks a lot about how the buildings would be oriented on the site with regard to the roadways and driveways that go through the site. And it's designed that way so as to promote that kind of internal circulation to the maximum extent possible. Last thing we want to have happen is have people go into the site and have to come back out onto, onto Hop Meadow, back out onto 10 to go back into another portion of the site. One of the things that we talked about at length during the whole charrette process was ultimately, at some point, it would be really nice to have a pedestrian bridge across that really low ground. So the people, for example, could live on one portion of the site, walk across the bridge or another portion of the site. So the whole live-work-play concept was something we talked about at length. Whether somebody would ever really want to tackle that, building a pedestrian bridge through there, with hopefully minimal intrusion into wetlands, we just simply don't know yet. It's kind of a tough sell.
How long would that bridge, I'm sorry? How long would that bridge be?
Well, a couple hundred feet usually. Because a portion of it is obviously fairly deep. The deep portion of it is not tremendously wide, but it's, it's also quite wide as well. So, once you start to get involved in even a small amount of disturbance of the wetlands area, a core of engineers gets involved, it's floodplain, so DEEP will be involved as well. So, while it's possible and technically feasible, it's probably unlikely that it's going to happen right away. So that's something to keep down the road.
Alan, what was your concern with mixed use?
I just, I saw the phrase mixed use, and I know that mixed use doesn't, oh, it's here in there, it's in the first few pages. But I know that mixed use, I mean, the stuff I've seen doesn't necessarily include residential. And I just wondered if this, well, Iron John's here, she says, yeah.
But the intent is that it's to contain residential wherever possible. What happens in this draft, on page 17, for example, there's this, a table of permitted uses. So that if you go down those zones, you'll see what the mix of uses is proposed to be for any particular zone. So it's laid out there. Residential uses are on upper floors, for example, in neighborhood commercial areas, allowed on lower floors and other zones. So there's some areas that could be strictly residential, there's some areas that are mixed with commercial downstairs, down the first floor, residential upstairs. So there's a variety of things that are possible.
But you could combine a commercial use, say, with an agricultural use, that's mixed use.
Yep. You could.
Yeah. Are there any metrics in here as far as commercial buildings that are not on-site at this moment that are proposed?
No.
I mean, how big they could be? Correct.
Yeah. The coverages are...
The heights are... No, not the heights, the square footage.
No, the idea is that they would need to follow the illustrative plans that were put forward. We could scale these, I guess, you know, if you want.
But there's nothing in this draft as far as a, a size of any non-existing buildings to these areas? They could be anything? They could be up to 100,000, they could be 60,000 if something came in?
No, I don't think so.
Because it doesn't follow our plan of development?
Well, it does follow the plan, actually. If you look at the plan, it talks about mixed uses, it talks about the size of the buildings being in context with the area around it. It, it uses all the terms that are used in the code.
Okay.
So let me, a couple things.
Yeah.
I talked about the type one, two, three, and four applications before. And let me say that the type two application or type one application would be pretty simple, pretty straightforward, and that would apply primarily to the existing building, the reuse of the existing building.
Right.
Could be really simple, could be really small. Nothing else in that site is going to be able to be that large, it's just not going to, it's just not going to happen.
But there are, there's plans here, or on this graphic, there are plans here for two separate larger buildings that could be in a commercial application. And there's no metric that says they can't exceed a certain square foot size?
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you scale those, Mark, if you take, take a look at those and look at the size of them, you know, if they're 50,000, 60,000 square feet, I'd be surprised. A smaller one is probably around 30,000, as I said before, kind of like a, maybe a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods or something like that, small one.
But there's nothing in writing, other than this schematic that is a variable at best.
The thing about, the thing about this type of plan is that this schematic is really important because it's not just a plan. I mean, it really is locked into the code. And the code refers to the plan in a number of different places. So that it's really much tighter than sort of a general plan. It's not just a vision, it's the plan. Okay?
But there's, this plan is variable, right? It doesn't have to be, this, this plan is not the end-all blueprint of what could possibly go there, or nothing goes there, it stays as it is, or it can move toward this kind of development and none other?
No, there's a lot of flexibility, but within that, within those guidelines, within those parameters, it's pretty tightly constrained. I mean, that's important to understand.
By way of the written draft?
Yeah. And, you know, and these are, and these are good, good questions that I think somebody asked me before the meeting, you know, we have to vote on this tonight, the answer is no. Don't, clearly don't.
Right.
Because the zoning commission, the proposal anyway, at this point, is to have, their public hearing will be in June 16th. So you'll have another meeting at least to talk about it, to generate whatever other questions you might have as well. But I can generate, I'll give a specific answer for you, Mark, if you're ready.
Well, it's not so much that, I just wanted to know before I, you know, before I dive into this draft, how flexible the graphic is relative to the code that's written out? And if it's, kind of like the center, center code, is very specific about what can be done and how it's supposed to be planned out.
Right.
And there's very little wiggle room there. Where here, it sounds like there is flexibility because it is a large area that is allowed to become what's appropriate, which is, like I said, it has a flexibility to it.
I think that has some flexibility, but again, one of the other components of this plan that's important is, in the other appendices, for example, there are specific pictures of other things that are acceptable, that are deemed acceptable. So for example, they have a picture, and this is not particular user-specific, but it has a picture of Panera building on page 45, it has a tree, and it has the context, that is, the sort of the bulk of those types of buildings that would be appropriate for those areas. And it talks about neighborhood commercial, talks about the different zones. The neighborhood transition zone shows, again, some different types of residential structures, talks about specific uses and transitions. And so the, the context is, is really kind of there, not only in words, but in graphics. So you can take a look at it. There's nothing that shows any of the huge buildings that I think you're, you're talking about or concerned about.
No. Well, what gives me an oddity here is that the particular one you just pointed out on page 45, says the neighborhood commercial zone is intended to provide. Whereas if you look at the other ones, they say, "Transition zones shall provide," on page 46, and on 47, it says, "Neighborhood zone shall provide." So, we all know what's making us nervous here is the size of something that they can come in and put in. And that, that's really the sticking point here. This, that page 45 has a whole lot of room to move around it, where the other ones seem to lock it down a bit more. Right. And I'm just wondering if there is, like I said, in the plan of development, we had some kind of metrics for form-based codes. And I'm wondering if this is that detailed, as far as giving us the metrics that says they can't really exceed 30,000 square feet, or 40,000 square feet, or any other buildings that aren't on the grounds at this moment in time? As far as residential, of course, that's up to consideration because it is a residential, and you never know how many units someone would be interested in putting in, in a mixed use format. But when you put in a commercial building, the door's kind of open. And like I said, I just wondered if there was fixed units that were, would not be exceeded?
I don't know. I'll get, I'll get a good answer for you before our next meeting. I understand the question. I think that a variety of things. One is that the types of uses that people were concerned about either years ago or even recently are extremely unlikely. And I think that what we're dealing with here is a huge building that, as has been said many times, is half the size of the Chrysler Building. And the reuse of that building is something we would really like to see happen.
Right.
Again, I think that's probably not going to happen. Whether the building is going to stay there for another two or three or four years is, as I know, at this point in time, obviously, the only group that would know that would be the owners of the building. So if that building itself were converted to another use, whether...
That's, that SD, or special district, that the existing building is in, now, that could be subdivided out, and it's not categorized as strictly office space, it could be retail space as well, correct?
That's right.
And so it could, and I'm only throwing this out here as an example, it could be almost a small mall, even though malls are no longer viable entities anymore, but it could be a small mall, correct? So that we create this shopping area as compared to a mixed-use office, residential, or several, you know, 100,000 square footers, or 50,000 square foot office type of spaces.
It could be 600,000 square foot buildings, that sort of...
Okay.
It's a possibility.
So, Iron, the, the zones, the character zones that are shown on these illustrative master plans, are they fixed? Or can a developer come in and decide which character zones they, they propose?
If they propose something different than what this shows, though, that would be probably a type three or type four application, that would go through a more reverse review process.
But the, the existing building does not need to be SD, it can be changed.
Well, if SD, if this regulation gets adopted, and this code gets adopted this way, it's SD.
Right.
So if that were to change, there were, someone were to propose to change that designation, they would have to come and go through the process to change the regulation, that would be a regulation change. One of the things, and this has been a very interesting process, is to work with the current, current landowner and see about how much flexibility they would like for their current building. And that's been challenging. And I think that they would like the most flexibility that they can have, whether that ultimately we can properly match that up with what the town expects. We went through a long discussion about which process would apply to what type of thing could happen to that building. So for example, if somebody wanted to come in and move into a portion of that building and simply use it as an office, no big, no big deal. If they wanted to use the whole thing, that's probably still no big deal, as far as we're concerned, from a use standpoint. If they wanted to use a portion of it for commercial, another portion of it for industrial manufacturing facility, they could even use another complete portion of that building for residential. Could be a lot of different things. Economics aside, that could still possibly happen within that existing building, if, if the walls of that building are not changed. Once the building starts to change, and once the building is changed, the footprint of the building is changed, the size of it's changed, the use of it's changed, then you start to get into the type, you know, three and four applications. And that's, that's what we spent a lot of time discussing the last couple months.
I read it here, I think that no matter what happens, the way it's coming is on will never be lost. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's correct at this time. Now, once a new use is established, and once this zone is adopted, and somebody comes in and says, "Okay, I want, I want that zone on the northern piece, or the southern piece, or the whole thing," then I'm glad to do that. But they wanted to continue to maintain their ability to build another office building that's there, and I don't think anybody objects to that.
What's the reasoning? The buffer on the north end is 100 feet, and the south end 200, is there, is that something, is that arbitrary, or is that just...
I don't know if it's arbitrary so much as it is, what happens is that, you know, in the south portion, for example, that existing burn that's created there now basically prevents anybody from seeing the existing building, even though the building is substantial, it's a four-story building. On the northern, northern portion, the property is much shallower, it's probably only half as, as deep as the southern property. And so the space there, the amount of space, its value, it still needs to provide some green space, still need to provide an entryway into the property, but the ability to provide that same amount of space and still maybe that amount of the viable is not really there. So that's really what I think. Now, somebody could come in and say, you know, "We'd like that a little bigger, we'd like to make that a little bigger, we'd like to make it a little different shape." And again, that would go through the process, go through the commission review process, and see if people thought that was acceptable or not.
Well, the existing building and campus that is developed now, parking lots, building, not the northern partial, but that southern parcel, basically, from what I'm seeing, it's the charrette or, or this plan is suggesting that it's almost 100% commercial in use in some form, way, shape, or form. Because all of the designations are mixed-use, transition, neighborhood commercial, meaning commercial shops, not necessarily residential in any form, until you get to the NT, which is over into the north, or N neighborhood, which is over in the north parcel. So that southern parcel is basically being formed as some kind of a commercial location, if we were to, you know, extrapolate out a little bit into the future, with the intent here, even though there's an NT which that mixed use would allow some residential component, or townhouses, or something like that, right?
Right.
Within that space. But its main focus, it seems to be, is to use it in some kind of either office or residential, or retail-type formats.
Primarily, you know, we, we had really wanted to have a little bit more office on the, or non-residential use on the southern piece.
Right.
Just because, number one, is already committed.
Yes, it's committed with the building.
We think it makes sense. If we were to build a structure in the middle of that parking lot, it's probably going to not be a single-family residence.
Oh, right.
Those kinds of things. If you take a look, though, Mark, at Appendix C, at the other draft plan, the northern piece on that one, for example...
Is almost all residential?
Is, is a lot residential.
Right.
Small amount of neighborhood commercial with clustered residential around it, and a lot of open space around it. And that's one of the, we talked about the agricultural option as part of the charrette that was kind of a nifty thing, whether that would ever be realistic, or whether it be feasible or not. We asked them to stick with that because we said we know people would like to see that, if that's possible, and maybe they could build some high-end residential there, maybe they could build some mix-in, some workforce residential with the neighborhood commercial, could be a nice little commercial cluster, that would be a possibility there as well. So that map does, that northern portion tends to have a lot more residential in the southern portion, absolutely.
What are the height restrictions? For, I'm looking at Appendix A, for example.
Well, the existing building is four stories.
That's, that's a given, though.
Right. But you can't see that. So anything else that's there would be left in that.
Alan, on page 27, and then again on 31, arson development standards.
Yeah. It talks about, yeah, exactly. It talks about four stories or 50 feet max, subject to preservation, use of the ridge and the tower from Highway 10. So it acknowledges the fact that those are things that we want to preserve. It talks about the neighborhood, for example, transition zone, that's what that is, three stories or 40 feet maximum, pretty much like a single-family house, a large single-family house, with a peak roof, 36, 40 feet. And again, those are the types of things that I think would, would be subject to a lot of review, depending upon what people actually propose to come in with.
How much, how much review is there in each one of the application types, like type one, type two? That means they're following this base plan, and so it's a fast-track application, correct?
Yeah.
And do we have any oversight at all on that, or do we have any input other than just a basic referral?
If it's, you have a referral, if it's a zone change, okay, if it's, if it's changed from the adopted zone, but you also have, if it's a subdivision, you would have jurisdiction over subdivision. So, in a type one application, for example, as I call it on page 60, type one application is for basically for the reuse of the existing building. And it goes on and on, but that's what that is. Type two, reuse of the existing building with site improvements and exterior remodel. So it begins to get into a little bit more, it says, "Minor amendments to an approved master site development plan." Again, site plan for buildings under 25,000 square feet, which is the same thing as we have in the town center.
Right.
People felt fairly comfortable with that, with or without an approved master site development plan. So that's two. Three, a new master site development plan, and the process there is spelled out there in that particular diagram. Talks about a new site plan, staff meets with the applicant, complies with the plans, goes through the zoning commission, also goes through the design review board. And by the way, it's also going to go through the conservation commission for any environmental issues at the same time, unless it's a, an application that requires a subdivision.
So we don't get any bite of this apple until it's the fourth, type four.
Right.
Everything else is, is, once this is passed, is...
It's administrative?
Is just administrative, as you said.
That's right.
Okay.
Unless I missed my step, I'm pretty sure that that's...
Well, that's the one where it goes outside of this, and it goes through the long review, is number four. I was wondering if number three was. I understood that number one, number two, application types were basically already fast-tracked because that's what this charrette was about, it's the same as the town center, as long as they follow the master plan, everybody can move along. And, and what you're suggesting is that application three type is also one that we have very little review process on.
I think it's going to really depend on how significantly different, this is far as I'm concerned.
Right.
How significantly different the new master site development plan would be from what was approved. For example, if building's in excess of 25,000 square feet, I propose, and it's a new plan, I would say, you know, let's refer it to all the commissions, what's the problem with that? That would be fine. The way this is, is currently drafted, and again, we went back and forth a lot with various parties, they wanted to see as little review as possible. And other people may say, "No, we want to see the whole thing." So we're trying to strike a balance.
Right. And I just wonder how hard it is for...
Type four application is very similar to what we do in the town center, alternative compliance is what it's called.
Yeah, what we do already. Yeah, what we do already, because they say we're coming in for a zone change.
Yeah, exactly. So, that's the formal submittal process.
I have kind of a comment on what Bill was talking about, page 27, where it begins to talk about height. Under neighborhood transition, it's up to four stories or 50 feet, subject to the preservation of views of ridge. I'd kind of like to know, like, what that means, view of the ridge, I mean, you could see the top, you could see a half of it, a quarter of it? And I wonder why that language doesn't appear under neighborhood commercial or neighborhood?
Well, probably because the heights are less...
Well, I understand that, but if you're, what's the buffer there, 100 feet, is it?
Probably, at least, yeah.
On the northern...
At least, yeah.
Well, a 40-foot building 100 feet off the road is going to obscure most of the ridge, generally.
Actually, I don't know, you can't go...
I read it formally the other night, didn't you?
Yeah. The view analysis that was done was pretty good. It showed, you know, how large a building would be, where it would need to be sit in order to obstruct any views. And so, that's not, that's not an unreasonable thing. Some people seem to feel that you should be able to look at the tower 100% of the time while you're driving down the road. I'm not sure that that view was shared by everyone, but clearly, you need to be able to see it reasonably, it's a historic site, it needs to be, you know, put visible. So, exactly what that means, I think we're going to know what it means. I mean, right now, in the back of the southern site, there's obviously a very big building there. Question would be, how close to the road on the northern site could a structure be?
Right. How high is the southern side?
I guess what I'm saying, a 30-foot building.
How high is the existing...
But that's how far back a site line is. It's four stories.
And then...
Do you draw an angle?
We had a thing before that was turned down because it was too close to the road, but I'm trying to think of, is there anything that involves, I didn't catch, maybe it was in here, but I missed it, about, like, if you develop the northern site and you've got a 100-foot buffer, is there anything that says parking has to be behind rather than front?
Well, it shows on the, on the plan, on the illustrative plan, that there's very little of parking, there's an access way into the northern piece, there's an access way across it, but there's no parking in front of that green space. So, parking would be set back significantly from the road. And clearly, that would not only be probably slight berming would be appropriate in those areas, but if you actually go by that area now, it's actually significantly above the level of the road right now. So, it wouldn't take a very large berm or some small plantings to screen anything that's really in there from probably the first floor to park, whatever. But there's no parking proposed in that initial green space there.
I'm going to back up and say it again, I'd like to know what view of the ridge means. I mean, there's a big difference between seeing the tower and seeing the ridge the tower is on, and seeing half of the ridge or none of the ridge.
I think, you know...
I'm not suggesting that we're going to be in a situation where we see all of the ridge all the time, everywhere, I'm not suggesting that, but I would like...
So, I have heard that.
Yeah, well, you can't now, okay, thanks to our wonderful plantings, which cover the ridge too.
Well, it's interesting, I think that...
But you don't need much near the road to cover the whole thing, not much at all. So, I guess, I still understand it, I think that 30 feet in neighborhood commercial, 100 feet off the road, covers just about all of the mountain, I believe.
Well, I would tell you, I don't know.
It's easy to do, I mean, the mountain's 700 feet high, all you need to know is this distance, you draw a triangle, it's pretty simple, right?
Yeah, well, first of all, you'd have to have a building that went that whole length of the property. Can you see a building?
No.
Well, maybe you can see, maybe you can see a building, but if we're spending so much time to get them to do buildings that we like to look at, it's hard for me to understand why they're, unless the building were, again, the entire length of the property, why it would be that objectionable. You've got to be able to get into the site, you're going to need access for that to get in. You're going to have to have some green space in front of the property, and it shows that as well. The other structures are fairly small. The neighborhood commercial, for example, again, that's back probably 200, 250 feet, at least, from the street. It's a single story, probably a single-story building, most, could be 30 feet, still not much, so...
I guess, really, all I'm saying is, I'd like that to be a consideration, that where the building is placed, how many buildings are placed.
We struggled with that when we did the master plan back 10 years ago now.
2007, yeah.
Well, that's when it finally got through, but we struggled with it through '05, '06, to come up with the fact that we wanted everything pushed back off of the main road, so that, once again, it was back far enough so that it wouldn't obstruct the gateways, as we call them, you know, that was the southern gateway.
It would be obstruction, I know that, I just think we should consider it much.
Well, it really did. We struggled with that metric about how far we wanted everyone to push back off of that, just like we pushed the Hartford back as far as we did and hid the building completely, you don't even know that there's an 800-square-foot building, I mean, 800,000-square-foot building back there. And it's important, and everybody struggled with that. And I think it's in, actually, the master plan, it refers to maintaining those sightlines. I'm just concerned that we don't have any review, other than, or, Hiram, who would have review on an application on something like that, since we really don't have any jurisdiction there? Who has jurisdiction? It would only be zoning, and even zoning doesn't really have a review on this, right?
True. The design review board, because this is a design-based regulation, design review board has a lot of jurisdiction with regard to design.
But design review doesn't have any legislative, I mean, they don't have any legal powers, they're just advisory, aren't they, huh?
Under this, under this regulation, this is a form-based code.
Yeah.
So, in this regulation, in the town center as well, design review board has a lot more clout than they would typically for a regular application. And the way that the applications are set up, based on the Type 1, 2, 3, and 4 I mentioned before, is the design review board makes a recommendation, review and recommendation to the zoning commission, but because it's a form-based code, and because a design is so important, they have a lot more, I don't know if the word is the right term, they don't have regulatory powers, but they have a lot more ability to make recommendations and comments on the application. The zoning commission in Connecticut, under Connecticut law, has the final say, no question about that, no question. And this regulation doesn't change that, but it does push a lot more of the design focus toward applications that would come in.
Even in 1, 2, and 3 applications?
1 is basically an administrative application, somebody wants to use the building the way it is, puts a sign up, that's not, but 2, 3, and 4, yes.
The zoning board would be one of, you know, the one that has the review powers.
That's right. Even Type 1 applications, conservation commission's still involved in that, but that's basically...
In any one of those, do we have referrals?
No.
We have no referrals at all.
Not unless it's a subdivision. But keep in mind now, the possibility that, and again, under Connecticut law, you need to have, are granted the referral authority, if it's subdivided. The way these properties are broken up, it's pretty easy to see how it could very possibly be a subdivision on any...
Well, on the northern half, yes. On the southern half, there's no, you know, I mean, it's all commercial, there's no subdivisions of commercial.
I'm not so sure today that you're going to find one developer that wants to do the whole thing. So, what happens in some of these projects is, they split the project up in two or three or four different developers. They may sell one part of it to one developer, they may proceed, two years later, they may sell another part of it.
So, that big building could be processed up and deeded over to different owners, is that what you're saying?
Could be, and it could be made into a condominium.
Exactly.
To be honest with you, my feeling is that more realistically, it's more realistic that the building will come down at some point in time, unless somebody comes along with some great idea what to do.
Right.
If in the meantime, the other development, development on other portions of the property has proceeded, that's great, that'll continue to make the tax loss less, but also continue to increase the development on the property.
Right, and save the building.
Before, you know, as we're on this commission, there's a subdivision, correct me if I'm wrong, but for Blue Ridge Insurance, who wanted to go with the building, and they were turned down for 50-foot, it was a 50-foot difference in what they wanted, and this commission allowed them to do, so they didn't do it.
Planning commission?
Yeah.
Voted against them?
50 feet.
And where were they going to be located? Right, right...
Down by the CLNT?
Yeah. That issue would have been done, gone along, along the... So, again, I don't, you know, again, I don't want to, I'm not asking any questions at all, but please, send me whatever questions you have, you know, the next few days, whatever I got Bill's comments today, I'll get those back to the, in some way. What I'd like to do is get whatever comments, answer it as soon as possible back to you, so we can hopefully move this into a public hearing for the zoning commission on the 16th of June.
Okay.
That's what we're supposed to do, anyway.
What did this report cost?
$175,000.
And what portion of that, with the Hartford?
145. So, you can understand, not only are they landowners, but they're vested, you know, vested interest in making sure that it comes out of the park. And we want to make sure, too, I mean, it's, to me, it's unreasonable to say, somebody will only let you do something that we would like, regardless of whether it's economically feasible or not. We need to make sure that things are economically feasible, otherwise, we're just all wasting a lot of paper and killing a lot of trees here for nothing, so...
Right. Hiram, is there an existing master site development plan?
For that site? No, other than the site plan itself, though, for that building, no.
So, when, application number, type 2 or 3, and they talk about amendments to an approved MSDP, what's the basis?
This, this document right here that we're looking at?
This form-based code?
That's correct.
This will substitute or be the master site development plan?
That's right, yeah. So, if somebody wanted to change that, it would be amended to it, and that's when...
So, if I had been and wanted to build that, that's a Type 2, correct?
If you wanted to build exactly what's there?
Yeah.
Type 1, could be, could be, well, it's too big for me, I'll tell you, administratively, I'm certainly not going to do that, but it would go, again, depending if it were not a subdivision, you wouldn't see it, but if it was a subdivision, you'd get referral on that. It would also go to the zoning commission, designer review board, conservation commission.
Because that's required?
Yeah. That's required in your law.
It's interesting to me, in this, in all these cases, the massaging, first they come to town, and then those people sit down and do skull sessions, and so it's not like, come in with a thing and we'll shoot you down, so it looks like it's trying to be user-friendly for, to try and work it out before people get, you know what I mean, to discuss and interaction back and forth to get something that works for the town and for...
The other thing that is important, and I think that gets a little bit to what some folks are talking about, Mark and Alan are talking about, is that we, in every type of application, we would encourage the applicant to come in for informal presentation to all the commissions. We can have joint meetings under the chart we wrote in order, that allows that joint meetings, we can do that. So, for example, under Appendix G, application flow charts on page 59, it talks about informal submittal of development application. At that point, we would say that all the commissions know the application's in, you know, we're going to have an informal discussion, please come and feel free. I think the zoning commission's been very flexible with regard to coming in and listening to design review board meetings and so on, and obviously, have other commissions come in at the same time to ask questions, raise issues, ask whatever they want. At the informal process, there's no binding problem there. So, we think that's still a good way to do it, it works well, people get to have whatever questions they have on their mind addressed, and we think that's a good way to do it. And I would still do that, same with any, same one. So, that's one of the, you know, there are advantages and disadvantages to the code. Some places, the form-based codes are locked in so tightly that, actually, one of them, I talked about down in Maryland, has been changed about 14 times since it was originally created. So, if we get lucky enough to have this one changed a couple of times, we push somebody out, build something back.
So, we're going to put this on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, yeah.
Referral of the proposed revisions to accessory housing regulations, Article 4, Section B, Article 7, Section C9.
This, and I believe this was in your package, in your email package, does anybody need a copy of that?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion lately about accessory apartments, the zoning commission has had a number of applications on accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units, as they're, years ago, they used to be called in-law apartments, but the regulations are constructed so that there really is no requirement that the accessory dwelling unit have a relative or an in-law. There really is no requirement that there be a connection between the two parties. But there is a requirement in the regulations that the owner of the property needs to reside in one, either the small unit or the large unit, and that's a really important part of distinction that needs to be made clear. We talked a lot about recently, how large units can be, this does not change that, it cannot exceed 2/3 of the gross habitable, that is, the finished and heated floor area of a single-family dwelling, or a maximum of 1,000 square feet, it's a pretty good sized unit. So, whether it's for an in-law, or whether it's for a couple, or a single parent with a child, for example, probably would still be enough room for something like that.
Are the issues coming up with zoning, are they mostly special exceptions?
They're all special exceptions, accessory apartments are all special exceptions. And what that does is it allows a public hearing to take place, and some people, and I should be really clear about this, too, special exceptions are seen by some people as some sort of a problem, but what they do is they give the commission extra ability to look into various aspects of an application that they don't have under normal site plan. And so, the fact that it's a special exception, or a special permit, or the same thing under Connecticut law, is required for an accessory apartment, it was felt, I think, years ago, and probably still rightly so, that it gives the neighbors a chance to talk about it, it gives the applicant a chance to come and present their case, whether they're going to bring experts or not, typically for accessory apartments, they're not necessary. But it also gives the neighbors a chance to talk about whether this, they think this would work out well in their particular area or neighborhood.
Is it fair to say most of the special exception requests are for existing structures, or is that not fair? Or is it...
Well, what do you mean by existing structures? You mean existing houses?
I don't know, it's for a fact, but I'm told that people are coming in asking for special exceptions to structures that already exist.
You mean for units that already exist?
Yes.
In some cases, that has happened, no question about that. I was talking to somebody the other day, and living in a particular section of town, and they said they know for a fact that there are six accessory dwelling units that they know of, that there are no permits for, but the neighbors in that particular area, whether they knew about it or not, had no problem with the fact. There are other areas where people are very conscious of that, whether it's because of a lot of traffic coming and going, excess animals, excess kids, whatever it might happen to be, when those things are, well, are noticed. Those are the types of things that need to be discussed during this process. I don't think that there are any significant changes to this regulation that we currently have, but what I think that these changes, these revisions do is clarify a few things. They talk about driveways, they talk about the fact that you need to get certain things done before you can have them done. Applications need to be filed within 30 days of the transfer of the property, if someone's going to change, transfer the property.
So, that was in the existing regulation, but what changed?
It was, I think that we just wanted to make sure that that's really clear, I'm not sure if you think that wording is any clearer, if it's exactly the same.
Was this, was this adopted from the regional planning commission regulations?
No, I mean, it wasn't taken from that.
When I was at the regional planning commission meeting last week, one of the women, I can't remember her name, she, because this became a referral, this regulation change was a referral to the regional planning commission, and she's like, "Oh, I'm happy to see that it looks like Simmsberry adopted our wording." And I said, "I'm not sure," but she said, "But it looks, looks very similar."
Yeah, there, and they asked me that question, too, they said, "Did you use our model?"
Yeah.
I said, "I looked at the model, but I think that a lot of the bones of our regs are still here, I think it's still the same thing, so there may be some wording, minor wording here and there, but I don't think it was..." See, it may have been Lynn, Lynn DeSanto, Claudia DeSanto.
No, it was the other...
Emily, Emily, sorry.
Emily, Emily, yeah.
One of the things I think that is important here, the last section, that's standards, in terms of considering what the... in terms of considering what the applications should be.
Yeah, that, that appears to be a little more defined.
That's a little bit more fleshed out, I think, and that's to help the commission to decide, you know, is this the right thing to do for this application or not, and those are the kinds of things that we hope will be helpful.
Could you review section nine and take us through if, if I'm, if I have my grandmother living there, and then I decide to move, and Joe wants to buy my house and doesn't have a grandmother, can that be just a regular house, and then if?
If, if in fact, the new owner does not come in and file a notice to continue, it would in fact go back legally to becoming a single house, single family home.
Even though it might have two kitchens and that whole thing?
Well, yeah, but what happens is then the kitchen is, because they didn't come back and file, the kitchen is then, doesn't meet the regulations, it's then in violation of the regulations.
So it's a carry-on?
There are two choices, they can come back in and seek a permit for it, or they can remove the kitchen.
But under those circumstances, can you rent it to the University of Hartford student?
If you come back and get a permit for it, yes.
You could. You could, absolutely. Even though it's not relevant?
Right, yes. There's no requirement.
Right, no requirement at all.
No requirement that it be a relative, but the owner has to live on the property under the main or the exception.
Yeah, nice. But the only way this comes to anyone's attention is if there's a complaint.
No, actually, a lot of people come in, and whether it's a sale of a property, it's interesting, some people are going through selling a property, say, well, we had this little apartment, but we never really got the permits, and now we're going to sell it, and we're selling it as a, you know, an accessory dwelling unit with our help, so they want to get it permitted. And so there's a mad scramble usually before they do anything to try to get it permitted. I would say that the commission is not particularly sympathetic to units that have been created improperly in the past. I think that recently we know that that, that's the case. In some cases, there's probably a reason. We had, we had one which has a sort of long history where there's conflicting information in the building department records, whether the building department knew about it and gave permits for it and so on. Now, did the person ever get the proper zoning permit? That's a question, but they got the other permits that they thought they needed. So it's often, it's often, you know, kind of a puzzle to need to put together. So these are, these are the things that are, this, are the changes that are going to the commission for their public hearing.
Hiram, there's two definitions, I, I can't discern a difference between the accessory apartment, which is Article four, section B, and the accessory dwelling unit, which is also in that definitions section in Article four.
One of, I don't have my book in front of me, I apologize, one of them should specify, or at least be a little bit clearer, is it can be a separate building. So if you had a, a small building on your property?
Carriage house.
Convert that.
Exactly.
That's, that's the difference between those two.
So the apartment is contained within this structure?
Correct.
Not, accessory dwelling unit can be freestanding?
Yes. That's the intent. Now, if that's not clear, that's a good point, thank you.
Well, there's two definitions, but then in Article seven, it talks only about accessory dwelling units, but it does go on to say that it can be part of an existing structure or separate.
Yep. And that's the, that's the intent, is that, as Mark said, somebody had a carriage house or a garage with a large aerial boat or something like that, that would be appropriate. That was the intent there.
But not a trailer?
Trailer wouldn't necessarily do it, no. You can't have.
Okay, so the answer is you can't have trailers to this purpose?
No.
I don't know, Hiram, the definition of accessory apartment says, this is the revised definition, a second dwelling unit in an existing, single-family detached dwelling, or added on to an existing, single-family dwelling, or located in an existing accessory building, which may be expanded in accordance with the applicable regulations.
Okay, so you're covering all three?
Yeah, you're covering all three.
And then when we define the accessory dwelling unit, it says, a separate, self-contained living unit within and subordinate to an existing, single-family residence, or accessory with provision for an additional kitchen and living area not common to the primary residence. To me, it sounds like the same thing.
Okay, yeah, I think the way you read it is correct, and that's, the intent was that they be slightly different, like the way you're saying there, it does sound exactly the same, accessory dwelling unit was intended to be.
I think we should adopt one or the other. Unless there is a distinct difference between the two, which is not apparent.
Okay, good point. Let's just clear that up before we.
The second one, I still think it doesn't say it can be. Part of it, we can see. Is this, I guess accessory, the word accessory, does accessory in by definition mean, can it be attached or unattached?
Accessory really is with regard to the fact that it's in addition to the principal use of the property.
It doesn't matter if it's contingent or twenty feet away?
I think the way the definitions are worded right now, I think Bill's right, I think that they're, they're the same. I need to clean up that language or that.
So we move it. What's the intent there, though? Are you going to allow a pool house type situation?
If they meet the regulations, I think that probably is okay.
That's a pool, though.
What do you mean by that?
Well, so for example, if I build a large shed in my backyard and I'm going to use for woodworking, and then I get kicked out of the house, I can convert that with a bathroom with a dwelling unit, and I, you know, I can put in for a permit, as long as it meets all the requirements, I can still live in it.
Assuming, you know, assuming you were still the owner of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, still the owner, lived on the property, you do that, you're in the law. You know, a folks singer went time and said that her husband was in the chicken coop and he just never met her. It was a great, a great explanation of an accessory apartment.
We're updated, so.
We have members of the public here tonight, do you have anything to say, or is it a bad TV night?
No, we're just waiting for our, for our thing.
Hiram, on page two and three?
No, we have a, a matter.
Item, item eight, there's a typo, farming valley versus farming valley.
Where's that, it's not on my agenda. Am I crazy?
No, no, I went back to the auxiliary, or the accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, geez, backing up on us.
Oh, yeah, got it. Sorry for, please go ahead.
Just wanted to, as the two members that are audience here this evening, and I just have one map, so I apologize for that, because this is just a quick thing. You may have remember a while ago on, let me see if I can get this right.
Firetown and West Street.
There was a, okay, change in the property line? And this lot was created in the rear.
Was this the house on the corner?
It's correct.
Is this commercial?
No.
Cars, police, car shop.
It's on A corner, but it didn't use commercial.
It's eight, no, it's eight and ten Firetown Road. It's, it's up, it's up on the curve, yeah.
Yeah, there will swap with the, across the street?
Yes.
City corner from the car shop.
No.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Western.
Right near west, but not on the corner.
Oh, okay, all right.
Member of cutoff, piece of property. All right, so, and all I wanted to do is explain to you, just so that you know what's going on here, we, we got this map this week, we talked to the town attorney about this. This is a, a rear lot that was originally created, what's being proposed now is a change in the lot line, simply a change in the lot line to give more property to this, this rear lot, allow it to actually have some road frontage. And that's really all, so it's making a rear lot more conformal. We talked to the town attorney, it really doesn't qualify as a subdivision, it's really a lot line revision. So I just wanted to let you all know that, and just make sure that the applicants knew that.
So do the applicants own both properties?
At the moment, yes, we're trying to sell one.
So you're, you're trying to reestablish the property line with your own property?
Yes.
So then you have frontage on Firetown?
Yes.
And, or both properties have frontage on Firetown?
Well, right, the eight Firetown will still have legal frontage.
Yeah.
Ten Firetown Road will have.
Will have some legal frontage.
Will have some frontage, but not legal frontage.
But it's, it's more frontage than it currently has?
It has no frontage right now.
It's a flat.
Yeah, where's the existing property?
It's a rear lot.
They have an easement through, okay. Okay, so I just wanted to let everybody.
Yep. And this, this is hashed for any particular?
They're going to have an easement, they're probably going to have an easement over that front piece to allow to get from here to here. So it'll be a revised access.
I'm sure.
Do we have to act on this?
No, I don't think you need to.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
I just want, because I, you know, just saw things happening, or knew somebody that was coming by, and say, well, we never approved that, or whatever, just wanted to, you know, the zoning enforcement officer and the town attorney to talk about it, so.
Glad you, sorry you had to pull up with the first hour, but we didn't, if it's not in writing, we don't, we're not that quick, you know, so.
It's okay.
So it's.
It's what it is.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Have a good one. Go Red Sox.
That's right.
We got one. Okay, updates.
Couple of different things, the economic development task force, I think some of you have been coming about, have been coming to those meetings, and that's kind of an active group, a recently, it's a large group, I think with twenty people now?
Oh, at least.
So we recently split folks up into three different groups, a group on process, a group on programs, and a group on marketing, and I don't know, Bob, you want to talk a little bit about it?
No, go ahead, I mean, you're doing great, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be really focused really on the programs portion of that, so some of the other stuff will be just, when, when we come together and everybody talks about how their, their subcommittees are, are working, so. And we've got, have, we got, over the last few weeks, we just had a lot of background information about housing and, and economic development in general, and now we're starting to move into our working committees. I think that's where we are now.
I think the whole focus is to try to, for each of the groups, is to try to figure out how to make the economic development process more attractive to people who live in outside of town.
Relooking to streamline?
In some cases, I think the process group is talking about that. Not necessarily to speed it up to the point where it's improper.
Right.
But to streamline the process, so somebody doesn't have to come to a meeting, come back to another meeting, back to another meeting, and so on. So there, the process group is taking a look at that. The groups, I think, are going to meet once, once a month, I believe, they were meeting every two weeks, I think.
So do they have a conclusion date or summation date?
Well, the ultimate summation's two years, but I think that probably by the end of this year, we'll probably have some decent recommendations for people to consider, that's my suspicion.
And the ultimate goal will be to revamp the zoning process?
Oh, that might be a suggestion, I don't know, yeah.
Make Simmsbury more economically viable?
It is.
Well, but I mean, that goal has to entail the zoning, you know, because that's always the big stumbler, I would think.
Well, I know, a lot of people, I mean, there are a lot of people talk about websites, you know, and, and the role of the website in attracting outside interest to town, so there's people working on the website.
I see.
There are people working on the marketing, and, you know, who do we go out to?
Okay.
Personally, it's always been kind of a mystery to me, why do we as a state spend a lot of time and effort and money sort of trying to entice a business from one town to another town within the state? It's just, it's just frustrating, you know?
Instead of from another state?
Well, another state and a country, you know, I think that there are a lot of things that, and I think that the marketing folks are going to talk about that, and how, you know, how big of a, of a net to be cast, Connecticut Main Street is involved, that they've been to a couple meetings as well. So there are a lot of different things going on, and hopefully, like I said, within, over the summer, and probably by September, we'll start to get some recommendations from some of these groups, and should be fairly interesting.
We should be getting mean and bold by the fall, we're starting to flesh that out a little bit, and putting some proposals on the table.
That's good. The other thing I was going to mention to you is that the other night, we did have an informal discussion with the zoning commission with regard to the Northeast Utilities property in the Southern Gateway. I thought that discussion was, was a good discussion, it was an open discussion, people got to ask questions, both the designer view board and the zoning commission members that were here, and even some members of the public had a couple of questions and comments. There's no application at this point in time, so sometime in the near future, both the southern portion of that property, that the butts right on the Avon line, the Northeast Utilities portion of that property, and then the portion of the property that's north of the Northeast Utilities are all part of that, for different components. The southern portion primarily residential, as I recall, a little bit of commercial in the front. Northeast Utilities, obviously, existing industrial, commercial office space, and then the northern portion, they talked about some smaller commercial buildings as well. So that hasn't come back as a real application yet, it's under the PAD regulation, again, that would come to, and may come to this commission as a referral anyway, but it'll certainly go to zoning commission, designer view board, and we'll let everybody know as soon as it does come in as a real application.
Will you push it through as a pre-application, you know, advisory, like we have with most of the other applications that have come through?
Yeah, absolutely.
As compared to their.
What did you say about the CLMP portion? I thought that was kind of set.
Stay the way it is.
Is the southern portion only in Simmsbury?
Yes.
Yes.
Does it a but, Avon?
Yes, it does.
So do, does Avon have any, yeah, do we involve Avon's zoning commission, planning commission, anything?
We would probably give a referral to the, to the council governments unless it comes in for a zone change, they would get a referral, and we'll come to a crowd meeting, and again, zone changing, that would come to here as well.
One of the things I thought was interesting in that is that there were some people who were saying it's too bad you have to let the CLMP property sit the way it is. To me, it's a cash cow, you know, it doesn't hurt anybody, we get a lot of property taxes on it, I don't see anything wrong with letting it sit the way it is. You get, how many trucks do they have? Thirty-something?
Yeah.
We get the property tax on the trucks, the building.
Yeah, I mean, they have a, they have a long-term lease on the property, they'll be there for a while. Ultimately, what may ever happen to the piece, who knows, but.
It's true.
Probably no more office buildings, not with that size of, yeah.
Who's the developer?
Actually, there, there was a group that was doing the residential piece called Garden Homes. They built thousands of residences in various places around the Northeast, and Bloomfield, Blasdenberry, around the area. Northeast Utilities is owned by Mark Greenberg, and Mark's still there, and Mark still owns the northern piece as well, but whether he chooses to keep that and develop that himself or spin that off, we don't know. So those are the, those are the parties involved, at least the last time we saw, we don't, as I say, until we see an actual application, we don't know who's going to actually be the applicant, but that's what we know at this point. So that, other, other things are moving along, we have no, no further new information on the PAD at Powder Forest, remember, a while ago, we saw that, the assisted living facility that was proposed, and we haven't seen that yet, we're told we're going to see that this summer, I doubt we're going to see it in August, because I don't think the zoning commission's going to be in August either, so we're either going to see it in July or September. So if that, if that comes through, we'll let you know as soon as possible on that as well. I think that's it for right now, I think we, we did also make a pitch to the, actually the board of selectmen suggested that we ask for funds to revise, completely revise, that is, sort of recapture all the zoning regulations and sort of get those things straightened out, that need to be straightened out, definitions and terms and everything else. And the board of selectmen did approve that, and it's part of the budget process, they took it out of our budget when we're asking for the money during the budget process, but they said, we could ask for a transfer after the budget was approved, if it was approved. They did approve that at their last meeting, and now we have to go to the board of finance and ask them. So if that, if they do approve it, that's a process we'll be starting on, and again, I told the board of selectmen, and I think that'll probably take us, probably between nine and twelve months, so it's not going to be a short process, it's going to be a while, so, got to keep us busy for the winter, so.
Big why?
My last discussion with the town attorney was that they were working on some final minor points on that easement document, and that he was hoping, he was going to call me today if he got it resolved, so I assume it's not resolved yet, but there were some things that were in the final easement document that the town attorney was uncomfortable with, and he asked them to fix that, it's waiting for them to get back to him. As far as we know, it's still alive, still, everything's scheduled to go forward. We hope that they'll start this summer and be open in 2015.
Or grocery stores. Trader Joe's gets mentioned for the Hartford property, it gets mentioned for the CLMP property.
Got to have a place for all these people that were going to farmers for advice.
Two Trader Joe's in the half a mile.
They all pedal down on their bikes. People that go to Trader Joe's.
The only place they have a Trader Joe's must still change the SOA standards, because they want wine. That's why they're not doing those stores, because they can't get, they make a lot of money in wine, they not only have beer, but the state has a lot of wine.
You can't sell wine for money.
That's a very integral part of their business plan. I don't know.
Why couldn't they do what Costco does, and just have a little thing off to the side?
Costco, the country's largest seller of wine. Okay, it's two minutes, a little minute. And I think Rich will unseat you, since we had two regular members show up, so you can listen and comment, but you can't vote. I hate to do that, I think. All right, Mark?
Please. For the minutes on April 22nd, regular meeting, on the first page, any deletions or changes?
On 26th, I didn't write it, the business, the business manager of schools, Burke LeClaire. V E or V U?
Uh, I don't know.
V U.
D U R K E?
D U R K E.
Okay. Anything further on page one? There are nothing in page two, page three? Nothing in page three, page four? There are no changes, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Still moved, seconded?
Seconded.
You have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions here? The minutes are passed.
Looking for another motion?
Can I just add one thing?
Of course.
Burke, sorry. Last week, or members, two weeks ago, Kevin Farlowe and myself attended the Crowds Regional Planning Commission meeting. And the regional plan, plan of conservation and development was recommended for approval. So that goes on to whoever the regulatory body is that approves it. And also, there will be no meetings until September. So if there were any that were scheduled between now and September, they've been canceled.
Check, we'll check the, before the next meeting, we'll check the website. Right, that would've been the July meeting. And look at our attendees, because I, Rich, so I have an obligation coming up, and Rich is out of town for August.
Like, there wasn't one for August anyway, there was one for July and then September, so they're missing that July meeting.
Yeah.
I think I had the fall, anyone, I was doing it fall, like, was on.
Rich is, Rich is doing woodwork in that shack behind his house. I don't have the shack yet. He's building himself a fucking house.
It's illegal, you can't throw it.
All right, motion to adjourn? You have a second?
Second.
Discussion, objections, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.